Okay, everyone. Thank you all for braving this slight inclement weather to attend our study session here. Today is January 23rd, 2024. It's 1:00 PM, and this is a city council study session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
Here.
Councilman Montoya, I will know when he arrives.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Very well. We have two items on our discussion agenda today. City Clerk, you want to read the first one?
Sure, Mayor. Our first item is a presentation and discussion regarding the National Community Survey results.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name is Stephen Vickers, and I am a survey associate at Pollco. I am happy to be here to present a summary of the findings from the Prescott National Community Survey. Before I begin, on behalf of myself and my Pollco NRC colleagues, I'd like to thank Tyler Goodman, our primary contact throughout the survey development and implementation process. He provided very thoughtful and detailed feedback throughout the entire project and was instrumental to its success. Pollco is an online community engagement polling platform that provides the information and tools local governments and other public sector leaders need. Hundreds of organizations nationwide use Pollco for strategic planning, budgeting, and empowering resident voices. We make civil, verified community engagement online not only possible but accessible. Since 1994, the National Research Center has worked with hundreds of local governments and other public sector organizations to provide the data that they need to make informed decisions. NRC is probably best known for our national benchmarking surveys, such as the National Community Survey, the National Employee Survey, and the Community Assessment Survey for older adults, among others. Our benchmark database is the largest of its kind in the United States. The National Research Center and Pollco merged in 2019 to more effectively serve local government and project resident voices. We're proud partners of the International City County Managers Association, the National League of Cities, engaged local government leaders, and Alliance for Innovation. We also work closely with the American Association for Public Opinion Research. Now, before we dive into the results, I want to emphasize that there are a variety of ways that these results can be used. Most commonly, the jurisdictions we work with use their survey data to monitor trends in resident opinion over time, measurement government performance and ratings of public trust, and to inform budgeting processes and strategic plans. Our results also allow you to benchmark your community's specific characteristics and services against the same characteristics and services within other communities within our benchmark database. Our hope is that as these findings are presented, it will spur ideas for you in what can be done with these results, or where you might want to dig deeper. The National Community Survey, or the NCS, is a standardized, five-page, comprehensive survey that allows municipalities to assess resident opinion about their community and local government. The NCS focuses on the livability of Prescott by categorizing survey questions into 10 main facets of community livability, as shown here. These facets have been identified through extensive survey research as those that are most impactful to residents' quality of life. The NCS includes items within each of these 10 facets to provide a full picture of how residents feel about your community. Finally, these facets tend to align with municipal departments, making it easy for city staff to quickly find the information that is of most importance to them in the final report of results. So this was the first time that the city of Prescott conducted the NCS. All households within Prescott were eligible to receive the survey. 3,000 randomly selected households received mailings beginning on October 10th, 2023, and the survey remained open for six weeks. The first mailing was a postcard inviting the household to participate in the survey. The next mailing was a full survey packet that contained a cover letter with instructions, the five-page survey questionnaire, and a postage-paid return envelope. A second postcard was then sent as a final reminder to all selected households. Both the postcards and cover letter included a web link to give the residents the opportunity to respond to the survey online, as well as a QR code for easy access by those using mobile devices. All follow-up mailings asked those who did not complete the survey to do so, and those who had already done so to not respond twice. A total of 770 completed surveys were received from these efforts, providing a response rate of 27% and a margin of error of plus or minus three percentage points. For a bit of context there, the NCS tends to get between a 10 and 20% rate of return and approximately 5% margin of error. So we exceeded that in both counts. So we then, we compare the demographic profile of survey respondents to that of adults in Prescott using the most recent census and American Community Survey data and weighted the survey results. Weighting is a survey research best practice and helps to improve the representativeness of your survey results. In addition to the randomly selected probability sample of households, a link to an online, community-wide, open participation survey was publicized by Prescott. The open participation survey was open to all city residents and became available on November 6th. The survey remained open for two weeks, and 270 responses were received. This presentation and the report are based on the 770 responses from the random sample, mail-based survey. The responses to the open participation survey are provided separately in the full report. One of the advantages to a local government of participating in our community surveys is the opportunity to compare ratings given by your residents to those from communities across the nation. NRC was the first organization to conceive of the idea to create benchmarks of public opinion, which allows jurisdictions, again, to compare ratings of services in their city to ratings of similar services in other communities. There are currently about 500 communities in our national database representing the voices of more than 50 million residents. Prescott received comparisons to the entire national database, which I will be referring to, I'll be referring to during the presentation. All right, let's start looking at some data. Now, in the survey, we have two questions that directly ask about those 10 facets of community livability. The first asks residents to rate the quality of each, and you can see the resulting comparison to the national benchmark in the shading on the chart. The second question asks about the same facets of livability, but is centered on how important residents think that it is for the community to focus on each facet in the next two years. So we ask about both the quality and the importance of each of these facets, and then we use those answers to create the importance, the quality-importance matrix, which you can see here on this slide. So we use this chart, which is also included in the report, to help us determine which areas are relatively higher importance and lower quality to residents. So those are located in the lower-right quadrant, as pictured. This chart is just one of many ways to interpret your data and can be used to identify key findings and help a community determine which areas may need a digital focus or research allocation in the coming years.
Stephen, I have a question from Councilman Gambogi.
Yes.
Thank you. A couple of earlier slides, you talked about an error term of plus or minus 3%. And for the benefit of the public, that means if you interviewed the same 770 people, again, they would give you that same answer, plus or minus 3. But you talked about demographic groups, and I was going to ask, have you evaluated any non-response bias? Have you covered that in the presentation?
So the, that's actually a fantastic question. So the non-response bias is something that is, is real. It's something that is a, of a major issue to the survey research community, and while it's not directly addressed in this presentation, we do address that in the, in the full report.
And you talked about, you, you looked at different demographic groups. Will you be showing that?
I don't do a demographic breakdown in this presentation, mostly for sake of time, because we can kind of get into the weeds with that. But all of those breakdowns are in the full report, and you can break down not only by, by various racial demographics and, you know, age and sex and income, but also, you know, in the, in the future, if we wanted to find other cross tabs, as we call them, to divide the city up, whether that's through council districts or any other demographic, that's something that we could, we could always add going forward.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a, regarding the chart you just had up, where the intersections of quality and importance, is it possible to get this, because as I was going through the details of your report today, I mean, this weekend, it seemed to me that in some of these areas that you've grouped things together, and I would love to see them more broken out, for example, education versus arts versus culture. Is it possible for, to get some more breakouts if we were to work with Tyler to say how we wanted to see it?
That's, thank you for that question, Councilwoman. We could, moving forward, and, you know, in upcoming iterations of the survey, if there are specific elements of education, arts, or culture that are important to the city and we want to investigate, we can ask custom questions, unique, questions that are unique.
I wasn't looking for you to do any more surveying. It was how do you cut the data? So for example, I saw that education quality in the details was fair to poor. And then yet, I saw very excellent and good scores, 79 to 80-something percent on arts and culture. So to lump them together puts them right on the border where I think that the answers or the opportunities is what I'm looking for. The opportunities are going to be very different. So I was just a question of how we cut the data so we can more clearly see the opportunities.
Yes. Thank you very much. I apologize for misunderstanding the, the question there. But absolutely, we have at your disposal, we have the full data set. We can break apart, you know, the, the answers. We can look at the full spectrum of responses, so we're not just looking at percent positive. With that, with the data set, which I'm more than happy to, to send Tyler this week, we can, we can dig and, and break that up however you would like, whatever would be best for, for the city. You're very welcome, Councilman. Any further questions on this? Thank you, Mayor. Of the 123 survey items for which residents provided evaluative ratings, 18 received ratings higher than the national benchmark, 89 received similar ratings, and then 16 received lower ratings. Ratings are considered similar if they are within 10 points of the national average, and higher or lower if they are more than 10 points different from the average. Just a few examples of what was higher, we have the overall image or reputation of the city, the vibrancy of the downtown commercial area, which is actually much higher, which indicates a 20-point difference. That is 20 points higher than the national benchmark for the rating of vibrancy of the downtown commercial area. And then also, we have recreational opportunities that were higher than the benchmark as well. A couple of examples that were lower was the availability of affordable quality housing, which I think we can agree is a concern across the country. Then also, the ease of travel by public transportation. And all of these, of course, are in the, the report. So moving into some highlights of our findings, I do want to point out a few things that stood out to us as survey researchers. There's a lot of additional data in the full report that we won't go over today, and ultimately, you know your community much better than we do. This is an outsider's perspective of what we saw in the data. Driving into the city, it is absolutely no surprise that the city's natural, the natural environment is valued by the residents. In fact, all evaluations for the quality of the city's natural environment were similar to or above the national average. In the pie chart here, we can see that 91% of residents provided excellent or good marks for the overall quality of natural environment in Prescott, which was higher than the national benchmarks. Roughly 8 in 10 positively reviewed Prescott's air quality and cleanliness, which is in line with comparison communities. Survey respondents offered water resources a similar rating, which was actually higher than the national benchmark. Prescott open space and recycling services garnered positive marks by 2/3 of participants, while 6 in 10 said the same for the preservation of natural areas and yard waste pickup. Prescott residents also feel safe, and they indicate support for investment in public safety. So nearly all survey respondents indicated that they felt very or somewhat safe in both their neighborhood and Prescott's downtown area during the day. That's 96% and 94% respectively. About 9 in 10 survey participants favorably rated their feeling of safety from property crime, which was higher than the national benchmarks. A similar percentage reportedly felt safe from violent crime, which was on par with comparison communities. Resident perception of safety from fire, flood, or other natural disaster also met the national average, with about 3/4 of evaluations being positive. All safety-related services garnered ratings similar to national averages. Fire services were given excellent or good marks by approximately 9 in 10 residents. About 8 in 10 offered positive evaluations for fire prevention and education, police services, and crime prevention. Approximately 3/4 of reviewers favorably rated animal control and ambulance or emergency medical services, while 2/3 of respondents similarly rated emergency preparedness in Prescott. The city also asked some additional questions on the topic of public safety, which I'm going to, to come to in just a couple of slides. Our final key finding that I'm going to discuss today is that some aspects of mobility could present opportunities for growth for the city. The facet of mobility measures the ease with which residents can move around their communities for leisure or business, and is a key driver of resident satisfaction. Scores provided by Prescott residents largely place the city on par with comparison communities, but below-average marks for some aspects of mobility may suggest an opportunity for additional focus on alternative forms of transportation, such as bicycling and public transit. When evaluating general aspects of mobility in the community, 1/3 of respondents gave excellent or good marks to the overall quality of the transportation system in Prescott, which was below the national benchmark. The ease of walking in the city earned a positive rating from 64%, and about 6 in 10 were pleased with the ease of travel by car. The ease of public parking and traffic flow on major streets gained favorable reviews from 4 in 10 participants. 1/3 of respondents were pleased with the ease of travel by bicycle, falling below the national average. Finally, 7% of participants positively rated the ease of travel by public transportation, which was much lower than other communities across the nation. Any valuations? I'm sorry, is there a question?
Yeah, Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one real quick question on the ease of travel by bicycle. I, I think probably the survey couldn't take it into account, but it's the topography of the area that we live. It's not that the streets aren't easy to bike on, it's that the roads are very hilly, and so I think that's probably reflected in that low number. It's, it's not that we don't have good roads, it's just the topography lends to making it difficult to bike.
Thank you, Councilman, and that's a fantastic point. When, when we're looking at all of these data points, we do have to take into context the full picture. You know the city more than I do. The, the ease of travel by bicycle was rated at, you know, 35%. As you said, the area is hilly. That can definitely play a, a role in that figure, as could other traffic conditions, as could being, having a population that is more in tune with bicycling, people who use the paths more often.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question, too. If I'm looking on page four, and we're looking at your analyzing of the data, my question was, under the age, which is pretty appropriate for our community here, 55, 89% were 55 and older. Could that also attribute to the bicycle thing? But my question was, did you send this out to single-family residences, or was there multifamily apartment residents also included in the survey?
Thank you very, thank you very much for the question. We actually oversample as part of just survey best practice. We oversample multifamily housing units at a ratio of 5 to 3, because traditionally, they do respond at a significantly lower rate. So in order to try to bump those numbers up, that's something that we do just kind of as our standard.
Well, how do you attribute down on the, the sex and age? 44% were, of the people that responded to this, were men over 55, and then 45% were women over 55. I do know we do have, you know, because of our retirement community, I just wasn't aware we had that many in apartment complexes. So that was interesting, that it wasn't skewed, you know, if in fact, some of those people that were surveyed were millennials or younger people. So, so that tells me that they're not interested in basically responding to these things. So maybe we need to make it prettier and have something on the front cover, I don't know. But, you know, we do, retired people have a lot more time on their hands to be able to do this, but it would be nice to have that age group basically weigh in.
Without a doubt, that's among the biggest challenges for surveyors today, is getting pretty much anyone under the age of 35, 40 to respond to these things. And we, we try all kinds of neat little tricks, like QR codes and, and offering, you know, online, you know, online access, but it's just being completely transparent with it. We, we struggle, like, you know, the, the whole survey industry does, getting the youngest respondents to, I mean, the youngest residents to respond.
How about a coupon for a beer down in Whiskey Row if they answered?
That's not something I would object to, but we, we, we do tend to frown upon such incentives, but.
Just, also, one last thing, just for the benefit of our police chief and our fire chief, I think are back there. If you go onto page 146, I was pleasantly surprised to see that. But if you add the strongly support and somewhat support additional revenue for services, we've got, we end up with 76% of respondents very concerned about that topic and would be willing to support that topic. So I just wanted to point that out for the public. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And, yeah, I'm going to get there on, on one of the next slides, in fact. All right. So in valuations for mobility-related street services, about 6 in 10 residents were pleased with street cleaning and street lighting. Sidewalk maintenance and traffic enforcement earned favorable ratings from half of survey participants, while 1/3 offered a positive score for street repair. Each of these were on par with national benchmark comparisons. Bus or transit services earned a below-benchmark score of 12%, excellent or good. Now, the NCS.
Councilmember Rusing has a question.
Thank you. I, I would just like to make a comment. When you say bus, public transportation has moved away from those old days where you had the big old buses belching smoke with like one person in them, sound asleep. It's called this empty bus syndrome, and now we're more moving towards micro-transportation. And also, we have nonprofits, Catholic charities, and NACOG that issue vouchers. People can call an Uber, call a Lyft, have a taxi come and, to get to work or their doctor's appointments. So I think, you know, when you, when you say, you use the word buses, and people say, well, I don't see any buses, so we must not have public transportation, but we do have other methods. Thank you.
Yes. Anything else? So the NCS has a space where a community can add questions of current topical or policy interest. I'd like to show the responses from the community to those custom questions asked by the city of Prescott. So I hinted before that the city had asked some public safety-specific questions. One question that they asked directly about public safety involved balancing response times with associated costs. So the, the formal question here is, please indicate to what degree you would support or oppose each of the following approaches to balancing public safety response times with the associated cost. So more than 3/4, as the Mayor Protem pointed out, more than 3/4 of residents strongly or somewhat supported maintaining cost and response times, while a slightly smaller number supported striving to shorten public safety response times, even with an additional tax or fee. Only about 15% offered any level of support for lower cost while accepting longer response times, with 62% strongly opposing this measure. Residents were also asked if they would support or oppose a sales tax increase in order to fund a selection of services. The strongest support came for using the hypothetical sales tax increase to fund public safety facilities and services, with 3/4 behind the measure. About 2/3 strongly or somewhat supported open space acquisition, public library facility. About two-thirds strongly or somewhat supported open-space acquisition, public library facilities and services, and parks and recreation, while about six in 10 supported using these hypothetical funds for the Prescott Regional Airport. The final unique question to this survey...
Councilmember Rusing has a question.
Yes, I would just like to bring up the airport funding. Our airport is not funded by, would never potentially be funded by a sales tax increase. It's funded by funds from our FAA and also from ADOT, Arizona Department of Transportation, which includes airports. And the FAA has a land acquisition fund, and I just wanted to clarify that the airport has never, ever tried to ask for any sales tax increase because of their operations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So slightly more than half of those asked supported using general obligation bonds and raising fees for service, while just a few, excuse me, now let me start over from the top. So a final unique question was asked of survey participants in this iteration. It asked the participant to indicate their level of support or opposition to using different actions to balance cost and revenue. Slightly more than half support issuing general obligation bonds and raising fees for service, while just a few, just fewer than half, supported increasing a sales tax. Fewer than one-quarter supported cutting or decreasing services, with 45 being strongly So in conclusion, we learned that the high value, the high value that residents place on Prescott's natural environment, we know that residents feel safe and support public safety investment, and we also indicated that mobility concerns could be an opportunity for growth for the city. Now, when you look at these questions, don't worry, I'm not going to ask you any type of pop quiz. All I want to do is pose these questions for you to ponder as you continue to dive through the results. What did you expect Prescott residents would say? Was there anything that you found surprising at all? Are there some areas where you would like to dig deeper? In what areas should you maybe focus efforts moving forward? Now, as y'all go on to do the great work that you do, how can these results ultimately help inform the choices that you make in city leadership? And that's really the point behind the NCS.
Councilmember Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I had a question, maybe for staff, and I would normally look for Mark Woodfill, but I don't see him in the room. Councilmember Rusing, oh, Mark, hi. Sorry, you were behind the podium there, I could see you. My question is, Councilmember Rusing suggested that the airport is funded by the FAA and ADOT, and that doesn't wholly square with my understanding of how the funding for the regional airport works, and I wonder if you might add a little bit more clarity to that, because my understanding is that the airport doesn't operate as a free service just on the generosity of the FAA and ADOT.
Excuse me, let me clarify that. I said that they've never asked for any sales tax increase, that's what I was talking about.
Okay, well, I still want to hear from Mr. Woodfill, and I appreciate you clarifying, even though you weren't recognized, Councilmember Rusing.
Yes, Councilmember Montoya, the airport, as Councilwoman Rusing has said, has not asked for a sales tax increase. However, the funding for the city share of the airport, city share of capital projects does come from the general fund, which is funded by sales tax. Also, any operating deficit that the general fund has does come from the general fund, which is funded by sales tax and state shared revenues.
Good. Like I said, my understanding was not that magical fairies from the FAA and ADOT come and fund our airport, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Councilman Gamboge.
In response to the questions you have up here, earlier I asked about non-response bias. You sampled 770 people, which means you didn't sample 46,000 people. And as Mayor Protem can tell me mentioned, you got a lot of elderly people in the survey response. There's questions in there like bus, and that's, you know, there's a million translations of what is public transportation. And being a cyclist, there's a million translations of what is bicycling. I'd like to, you know, if I were to say what I'd like to see, I'd like to see a better representation of all the people in Prescott, the single-family homes, multifamily homes, young people, not just the people that sit around waiting to fill out surveys.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to say in summary, when I reviewed the survey, I was very pleased and pleasantly surprised at the positivity of the community in supporting the city's endeavors and city staff. Healthcare did receive some lower responses. People have a hard time finding doctors here. I don't know if that's in our purview or not, but, you know, we have a wonderful VA hospital that serves all of northern Arizona here. We have a full-service hospital here in Prescott, and also they have a campus in Prescott Valley. But we do have a problem attracting doctors, so I agree that that could be improved, and we need to work with our community healthcare providers. And public transportation was perceived as being somewhat very low, but overall, people valued their quality of life here, their open space, and the natural beauty here in Prescott. And I also see that we got high scores for our snow removal services, too. Thank you.
Councilwoman Froerth.
I started looking at the, not the 770 that responded to the survey, I started looking at the 270 that came out of the community, looking to see, thinking those might be our activists, our very interested people, and to see what their opinion was. And from what, again, it's really hard to dig through the detailed data, so, but what I was noticing is those 270 people seemed a bit more critical of areas, and some areas, more importantly. So that would be something that I would like to focus on again, is comparing the 770 to the 270. I was hoping to pick up more members of the public that hit some different demographics in that. So if we could dive into that a little bit more as we get into the strategic planning session, I think it would help us focus on the opportunities.
Absolutely. And those comparisons can absolutely be made. With the raw data sets, we can absolutely put those side by side in a way that's super convenient for you, that, you know, that's as simple as looking down a single column to see the difference. So that's something that we can absolutely, to work with, and if Tyler Goodman would be so kind as to remind me to make sure that we get that to you. But that's not a problem at all.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo what Kathy Rusing said. I, too, was very pleased with the overall results of the survey. I thought it was really a positive survey. And the one thing that really stood out to me, and I just want to chime in as a member of council, was the high regard for open space and the enjoyment of the natural beauty of the area and public safety, and the willingness of the people that responded to the survey to actually experience a sales tax increase, to continue to support those missions of those entities. I think for the two years I've been on council, I've been advocating for a dedicated sales tax for acquisition of open space, because we've had experiences where maybe a landowner, maybe a rancher or developer has approached us and said, "Hey, I have this land, do you want to buy it?" And we don't have a funding mechanism in place. And I personally would be very, much in favor of having a small sales tax in place in perpetuity for both public safety and the acquisition of open space. I just want to go on the record saying that I'm in favor of that, and it's apparent from the survey results that it would be well-received.
I would add that I have a little difficulty expanding support for a lot of these survey results when we're only talking about 1,000 people that participated, when we have a population of close to 48,000. So making public policy decisions based upon a very small sample, and even though your testing protocol indicated these are within 3.5% plus or minus, I think that's a very small sample to make major policy decisions that impact the financial health of the city. One example I'll give you is being on the board of the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Association, and that organization's efforts to expand public transportation, using the YAVI line network that's being developed in Prescott Valley, they're probably in about their third year, that was fully funded by a grant from the federal government. Even today, after expanding their ridership almost 100% every year, and they only have something like, oh, I recall about 40,000 riders total in the year, but their cost per ride is $88 per ride, and they're charging $1 to $2 for a patron to ride their system. So even if they double that again next year, their cost per ride goes down to about $50. Now, I imagine if you surveyed the people who wanted more public transportation and said, "Oh, you're willing to increase fees? Would you pay $50 a ride to be on this little microbus? Or would you rather spend maybe $15 or $20 out of your pocket for a Lyft or an Uber, or even a taxi?" I think your results would be dramatically different. Even if they double again, after they've taken all of the federal government subsidies, and they're all gone, and they double their ridership again, now you're down to about $26 a ride. I think most of the, from my understanding, almost every public transportation system in the entire United States requires substantial taxpayer subsidies. So if you start raising the fees or the fares to balance the cost, I think you'll see a dramatically different change in whether the public wants this type of public transportation to be expanded. I think we'd be much better off supporting the private sector and providing expanded Lyft, Uber, or livery taxi services, rather than having the government try to run a system like this that's just consistently shown to be a huge burden on the taxpayer. And I think those kinds of questions need to be clarified when you're asking people, would you support expanded public transportation? They said, "Yeah, I'm willing to give you $88 to ride down to the grocery store." I don't think you're going to get too many yeses on that. Councilwoman Froerth.
Thank you. In relation to the questions that you had up earlier, I felt good that some of the findings specifically reinforced efforts that are currently underway, maybe we don't have the results out there yet, but things like the traffic lights coordination on Willow Creek, things like the code enforcement that we're stepping up on, and as well as workforce housing to deliver more affordable housing to all of our critical and service employees. But I also liked the fact that what I got out of this is it reinforced some ideas that we've been either bouncing around, or starting to develop, or thinking about as we go into this strategy renewal session, which is why it's so brilliant to get it just in time for that, even though it's a small group. I admire what the mayor said, but things like looking at our land development codes. I was surprised to see community design come so low, so I went peeling into it to understand what was it. And I felt like we were really good on some of the different efforts, but things like land use planning and zoning, and the infamous Wi-Fi cell towers that we had so much fun over over the last few months, saying that we need to plan versus being reactive. So that really made me, also things like that we need to step up our communications to the public, and we've been talking about that on a couple of different topics. And so for me, that was really very helpful, that our sense of what's going on that the community's asking for, we're hearing it, and nothing here shocked me.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few additional comments, and I appreciate what Lois just said. And I appreciate your comments about, you know, planning ahead as far as looking at what functions we want to provide as a government. I've often made the comment, and it's not a very nice comment, that if I ran my business the way the post office ran their business, I'd be out of business. I often feel that rarely does government deliver goods and services as well as the private sector, and I think the private sector is a much better indicator of goods and services than government trying to provide those services. As we get ready to embark on strategic planning, and we're talking about potential uses for additional revenue, I thought it was interesting that the Prescott Regional Airport came in last as far as priorities. Public safety was first, followed by open space, then the library, parks, and recreation. And I know that we're dealing with a lot of issues regarding the airport because of the need for land acquisition around the airport, but I realize it's a small sample size, but it does have a margin of error of 3%, plus or minus. But if that's the lowest priority of the citizens, and the highest priority is public safety and open space, and that's where I feel like we should be spending more of our time in strategic planning. Thank you.
Councilmember Rus.
Oh, I'd just like to reiterate that preventing residential encroachment at the end of a very busy runway is supporting public safety, and that's why it's very critical that we get FAA funding. They have a land acquisition program, and our previous airport director has a timetable and has had set goals, and has worked with the FAA, and had everything ready to go until her untimely departure. Thank you.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. On that other slide you had where you were asking us some of the questions there, what findings did you expect? Given the populace that answered the survey, I wasn't at all surprised with that. But one of the things I did notice here that was also very, very important, and I think we do need to, as we go into the strategic plan, talk about this, it's on page 99. It was 83% basically wanted to have more discussion about our economic health in the city. I wanted to point out to everybody, this particular city, we own so many things for a city of our size. I mean, we've got a golf course, we've got an airport, we've got garbage, I mean, just look at our neighbors, Prescott Valley, they don't own any of that stuff. We own it. And we have the lowest amount of taxes in the region, but yet we own the most stuff. So getting back to the transportation, you know, issue alone, I'm all for letting somebody in the private sector take that over. I don't think it's, if I have to prioritize where my money goes, I would say Uber, Lyft, let people make some money out there in the private world, and concentrate that money on what we need. We need our services. We need our fire, our police, and our roads also. So this was very revealing, but I would like to point out that we do need to do a lot of work in our economic development area, too. And that was revealing from the, you know, the participants. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd also like to correct the inference that the public is not all that supportive of the airport. When the airport is operating as efficiently as it is, when you can park there for free compared to how much you have to spend if you're going down to Sky Harbor in Phoenix, and you have reliable, on-time service, and the expanded number of routes that we've been able to add with SkyWest Airlines over the last few years, terrific and a beautiful terminal, I think a lot of the residents would say, "Why would I want to increase sales tax when it's great?" So that's why I think you're seeing some reference to sales tax increases referencing the airport. I think most people think that the airport, and keep in mind, this is a northern Arizona regional airport. We've got people that come from all over northern Arizona to fly out of Prescott Regional, rather than have to fight 17, go all the way down to Sky Harbor, stay overnight in a hotel so you can catch your flight in the morning, and not have to risk an accident on 17. So it's a much broader asset for us. So it's a much broader asset for us. But I will finally say that I'm very pleasantly surprised that the public is willing to consider supporting some additional tax revenue to be able to increase our public safety, to be able to acquire and build new fire stations, to be able to have the equipment and the engines and the vehicles necessary for those fire stations to be able to operate and to be able to reduce the response times. I think there's a lot of people, if they haven't called 911, they're not all that concerned about it. But when they call 911 and they have to wait 10 or 15 minutes for a response, then they're going to say, boy, we need much faster response, and we need to have closer and more fire stations to be able to respond to those 911 calls. Let's keep in mind that the vast majority of those calls have to do with medical conditions, not necessarily an actual fire. So I think at least looking at that number, that's encouraging for me in our plans to increase public safety response times and to increase our overall staffing in those Councilman Moore, are you still up there? Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. I would just like to remind everyone that Yavapai County is the fourth-largest county in the state by population, and Prescott is the economic driver for this whole county. And as a result, we're not only the economic driver, but we're also a very desirable place to live. So thank you for the statistics and the data, and we'll certainly put that to good use. Thank you.
I reinforce that appreciation for your analysis. And as I said, I'd like to see more response, but I know how difficult it is. You've got to grab some people kicking and screaming to participate and get their opinions out in front of it. But, boy, they don't have any time, any resistance at all criticizing us after we make a decision. So that's what I want to make it clear to the public. When you have the opportunity to weigh in, give us your opinions so that we can make good decisions, then that's your responsibility to accept the decisions we make and not turn around and say, well, they were bad decisions, but I didn't bother to participate in the survey. So thank you very much. I think unless there are any other questions or concerns, well, thank you for your presentation, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda.
Thank you for having me.
Presentation and discussion regarding ongoing city obligations under a development agreement between the city and Arizona Eco Development LLC dated July 13, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. We were requested to present to the public and to council an update on the promises made in the Arizona Eco Development Pre-Annexation Development Agreement. Now, I'll call them AED from now on. This contract was entered into in July 13, 2021, and has not been amended to this point. Generally, this would be a presentation more for public works or for rec services, but as you know, and as a matter of public record, there's a notice of claim and potential litigation. This study session will be focused on the promises made and the future or the forward-looking deliverables made as part of the agreement, not on the litigation, not on that. And as you probably know, we cannot comment on ongoing litigation. But we'll get into the promises that were made at the time of the contract and the forward-looking deliverables that were promised therein. So the first is Section 1.1. This was a promise that we would initiate annexation of various parcels of property upon execution of the agreement. And if we didn't, we would have to initiate rescission of the contract. This has been completed. We annexed the properties that were part of that development agreement, and the city has finalized that. Section 1.10 of the agreement deals with a grade-separated crossing of the Peavine Trail to the South Parcel Resort. Now, as you probably know, and I wasn't here at the time, but most of the discussions relating to AED was essentially water entitlements for certain area of land, water for rocks. And so some of these promises are kind of ancillary to that, but we'll go over each of those promises. So there was a, part of the contract was an agreement that AED would construct this grade-separated crossing and would do so by July 1, 2023. That has not yet been accomplished. So Section 2.19D, the city was to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Prescott Valley to deliver water to Section 33. And I'll put on the map in a minute, Section 33. But part of the agreement was that we gave 1,000 units worth of water to the Section 33, which is currently within the county, not within either Prescott Valley or Prescott. But given that we didn't annex that section and possibly could be annexed in the Prescott Valley, we promised that we would enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Prescott Valley, that even if it became part of Prescott Valley, we would deliver water to that section. That has been done. It's been approved and executed. So Section 2.19E.
Councilmember Furworth has a comment.
I have a question, because I'm just trying to go back in my brain, back to Section 1.1. Was that the safety concern about people walking the Peavine Trail, interacting with cars going into the resort?
It was.
And therefore, one would be raised and the other would be lowered, and never shall the two cars and people meet? Is that what that was? Okay. Thank you.
So in previous discussions, the city had stated that AED could do an at-grade crossing across the grade. But then the city said that we thought as a city it would be better if it was grade-separated, if it was above the Peavine Trail. AED agreed to that, but their obligation is to construct it and to pay for the amount of cost that an at-grade crossing would be. The difference between an at-grade crossing and a grade-separated crossing would be a financial obligation for the city to take care of. Does that make?
Councilmember Rusi.
And I'd like to clarify Section 2.19 as to the Section 33. That was already owned by the developer, and the purpose of providing water and sewer to that was to move houses out of the heart of the Dells, to save the Dells from masquerading and high-density housing, to move them out to a more appropriate location. And as I understand, no construction's been even contemplated out there?
No construction has been done at this point. I don't know about what's contemplated, though.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So Section 2.19E, and this is part of what you've probably seen and is the subject of a notice of claim, was a promise by the city to obtain necessary rights of way for water and sewer systems to run from the city to Section 33. Under the agreement, the city had one year to obtain those rights of way, and if the city was unable to obtain those rights of way within a one-year period, then took on the obligation to pay for the construction of the water and sewer infrastructure to Section 33. At this point, the city was not able to obtain those rights of way by the one-year period. We have since obtained then, but because we didn't do so within a year, we have the obligation to pay for infrastructure for water and sewer to Section 33. Now, under the agreement, the city had one additional year to build the infrastructure to Section 33. And if the city wasn't able to do so within that year, AED has the right, but not the obligation, that they can put in that infrastructure, and the city would have to reimburse them. So that is, that's kind of the subject of the notice of claim, as I mentioned, and I don't necessarily want to get into it more than that because we can't talk about ongoing litigation. But the city has begun soliciting, or the process for soliciting, design of that infrastructure. So we have to, we had to obtain the rights of way. We've done that. We now have to do the design, and then before we can do the construction. So the design process has been started, and you'll be seeing in council a request for entering into a contract for that design.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, and I realize that you're not the Public Works Department, and maybe this is inappropriate to comment on litigation, in light of the litigation, but I was just wondering if you could provide an idea of what the cost of that construction would be, or if we have determined that cost?
I think we have some estimated cost, and I don't know if Gwen wants to address that. They're only estimates at this point.
Sure. I think just, for me, it would be illuminating to know what that number is so that we know, you know, as I understand what you're laying out here, that that's what we're on the hook for.
Good afternoon, Councilman Montoya. Gwen Roach, Public Works Director. So the estimated cost at this time is between $5 and $6 million for the water and the sewer. It would run approximately from Granite Dells Ranch Road over to Section 33 to the east.
And can I just ask a follow-up? Do we have, we do have those easements in place to complete that construction at this point?
The map on the screen here shows the first leg there on the west is owned by Arizona Eco. The second piece, by Keystone Development, we entered into an agreement with them for them to install that piece of the infrastructure, which I understand was completed from a conversation I had with the developer last week. So that piece of infrastructure is in the ground. The next piece is located within the existing Granite Dells subdivision. The next piece, we purchased from Granite Dells Estates 2 back in December of 2022. And then the final leg runs up through Towne Prescott Valley Rightofway, Old 89 Rightofway, across SR 89 Rightofway, and up through a county parcel into Section 33. So the three municipalities have indicated to us that a permit is required, but utilities are allowed within their rights of way.
And when we get that design cost, when we approve the ability to do the design, when that design is completed, we'll have harder numbers in terms of actual cost, presumably?
Yes, Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Gwen.
That will be part of the scope of work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusi.
Gwen, I have one question. I see that this easement runs across a large amount of property, undeveloped property. Are there any plans to form a reimbursement district so that we can get reimbursed by the property owners when they hook up to this pipeline that goes through their property?
So the city is currently working on its development impact fee rates, and as part of that, we identify what's called an infrastructure improvement plan. I'll call it the IIP. And this project, this pipeline for water and sewer, is identified in the IIP, so we would collect an impact fee for it associated with new growth.
So what percentage do you think would be covered?
The pipeline would be funded 100% by development impact fees. It serves no purpose for existing users in the area. Its only purpose is to serve Section 33.
Okay. And then also, originally, when the development agreement was being negotiated, the plan was to go to the north of 89A across Section 32, and the developer had expressed strong support for buying Section 32. And I was under the impression that Arizona State Land Department would grant the easement, that it would be really no big deal for them to grant that easement across the land, especially since the developer was planning on bringing it to auction and purchasing it, which he eventually did last year, but then, for some reason, he withdrew. So I just wanted to paint the picture that, you know, these timelines in hindsight look very unrealistic, but at the time, it was felt by everyone in the room, I wasn't the only one in the room, that the developer could get the easement from the state land department and run the easement across, it was what was going to be his land anyway. So I just wanted to kind of paint a picture as to what was going on at the time. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Kentelme. Go ahead and respond to that, Joe. Thanks.
Oh, I was just going to say that, yes, the original plan was to go through that Section 32, which is state land, and the city wasn't able to obtain that easement. That's why we had to change our design and go a different route. If the developer had purchased that, it would have made that easier, but our obligation to extend the infrastructure of Section 33 still exists whether they had obtained it or not. So we're going for it on that basis.
Mayor Protem Kentelme.
Yeah, Joe, can you tell the public the year that that contract was signed?
Yes, it was July of 2021.
So this was, this contract was signed in 2021, just for everybody's benefit that's in the public. But one of the things I wanted to clarify for everybody is, in the past, we have made promises, as our attorney has noted, for things that we can't control. And we've discussed this a lot among ourselves, making sure that going forward, we don't make contracts where we agree for, in this case, to promise something that we are out of control. We cannot control what state land does or does not do. We can't expect them to march to our timeline or to the developer timeline. We really are at their mercy. So going forward, we're not going to be making promises that we can achieve, you know, getting an easement from state land, because we can't end that. We have to rely on what they can do for us. So that is part of the problem with what we've had here. But the other thing, if we can go back a couple of slides, I wanted to, on page 219, Section 219, I also wanted to point out for the public, the last paragraph there, it says, if the city does not construct such an infrastructure by July of 2023, AED may construct that infrastructure, and the city will reimburse them. So if you read what that means, this could have been taken care of by the developer had he, you know, really, really wanted to make sure that all that infrastructure was in, and we would have had to pay him back anyway. So I just wanted to point that out to people as we go forward. There's been a lot of innuendo and rumor out there, and I want to make sure that people understand how these contracts work. And as Gwen just mentioned over there, some of the estimates that we're getting in for actually making these easements happen are much less than, I think it was $150 million, I heard the other day. So just want to point those, a couple of those things out that exist in this contract. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kentelme. I'd also like to reiterate that the mayor at the time of these negotiations was not Mayor Phil Good, it was Mayor Mangarelli. And also, Mayor Phil Good was not in the room for the negotiations. It was the mayor, Greg Mangarelli, who was in the room for these negotiations. Phil Good had absolutely nothing to do with any of these negotiations and should not take any responsibility for any lawsuits. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Rusi. I think if people remember, when the first draft of this contract was made public, I did say that we had the basis of a solid agreement, but we still had work to do. And this is an example of the work that still should have been done before the final agreement to this contract. I've worked in enough contracts over the course of my professional career that you always put in contingencies so that if the good intentions don't happen, then your party or your side of the contract is properly protected. When there's intentions of acquiring land or there's intentions of getting rights-of-way easements from third parties that are not a party to this contract, you're taking a big risk. And that's what happened here, because the state land department had no interest in giving us the easements that we were expecting, because Lisa Atkins, who was the head of that department, decided she was going to retire, which she did when government, excuse me, when Governor Hobbs was elected. So she wasn't too active in working on cooperating with contracts like this, and that left us without that easement that was necessary to cross 89A. We also had the State Department of Transportation involved. If you look at that map, you've got about five different private entities, whether it's Granite Dells Estates or the Keystone Group, that we had to get easements to be able to build this larger and longer pipeline to get it to the point where we might be able to cross 89A into Section 33. So it's just remarkable to me that you would agree to have somebody else that's not a party to a contract have to perform within a year or two years at the most. And if they don't perform, then we're subject to the consequences of the liability and the financial liability. the financial liability that's going to come from finally getting it delivered over into that parcel that's privately owned. And I made this comment when we were first considering it, because Prescott Valley would have the ability to annex this. But we're going to hold Prescott Valley responsible for our water policies? We're going to be able to send code enforcement into a different city and say, "You're using your water inappropriately," and we're going to write a code enforcement violation? I don't know how that could work, and I certainly wouldn't expect it would work. I don't think Prescott Valley would come into our city and say, "We're, some of our residents are not doing things the way Prescott Valley would like them to do." So, this is another flaw in that contract. And here we are today, having the Arizona Eco Development saying, "We're in breach of this contract," when we've done, as you can see, many steps in good faith to try to complete this in a reasonable, timely manner. Councilmember Rusing.
Well, I'd like to add that, you know, obviously, we have a big highway that you wonder, "Why isn't there an easement there?" Well, ADOT has no easements for water and sewer utilities, because, you know, they plan on maybe adding a few extra lanes sometime in the far future. And so, there was, that was not an option either, to get an easement from ADOT either. But maybe Gwen could help clarify the fact that if we provide water and sewer to Section 33, the residences out there are under our water policy as far as our conservation and low-water-use fixtures, is that right? The building codes or not?
Yes, Councilperson Rusing. The property is located currently in Yavapai County, and whether it's in Yavapai County or in the town of Prescott Valley, it's subject to all water regulations for users by the City of Prescott, as well as the 30% up-charge for water being served outside the city limits.
As I mentioned earlier, there was an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Prescott and the Town of Prescott Valley that established some of those, that jurisdictional question.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you, Gwen. Thank you, Mayor. Also, just a quick notice, I wanted to make sure everybody realized that this fabulous attorney was not our attorney at the time. We do not, the city manager at the time is no longer with us. So, several of the top players are gone. And so, here we are, we're going to have to deal with this stuff going forward. So, just bear with us. Again, this man over here is an amazing attorney, so through the benefit of all his knowledge, we'll get through this, too. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. You all have brought up some things that I was, you know, aware, recently aware of. But coming in from a different industry, anybody who has other business backgrounds, you would never agree to this kind of an arrangement if you knew your business. And so, I will ask a very rhetorical question I don't expect an answer to, but who in the deal-making knew, or perhaps better said, should have known the risks and had this all secured before getting into such a deal? And for me, this is unconscionable. This is not good governance, so.
If you don't mind, I won't answer that rhetorical question.
Please proceed, city attorney.
Thank you. So, in Section 2.19G and 4.4, this is what I referred to as kind of the primary purpose of the agreement, which was an exchange of the 474 acres within the Dells for water service, which was to vest immediately upon deposit of the deed. So, these water entitlements, zoning entitlements, happened at the time of the vesting of this 474 acres. And so, as relates to those promises in Section 2.19G and 4.4, those obligations were met. AED deposited the deed, and the water service vested at that point. Okay, Section 2.26 was a promise by AED to construct and extend, or extend a trail, FIP and Trail, over Granite Creek to connect Granite Dells Parkway. So, I have a map real quick to show you, and I know that this is kind of, looks like a partial map, but where you see FIP and Trail extending eastward and ends and goes up northbound, the obligation would be to extend it from that point, FIP and Trail over to Highway 89A.
It's not a trail, it's going to be a highway. It's a road.
It's called FIP and Trail, but it is a road, right? So, in Section 2.26, the city is to obtain certain rights-of-way. There's no dates on these obligations, but the city is to obtain certain rights-of-way, and AED is then required to construct that, the extension of that road. The city then takes on the obligation to reimburse AED in cash at completion of the construction of that road. Now, as I mentioned, there's no dates as a deliverable, but the developer anticipates completion of construction not later than July 1, 2023. That has not been completed, the rights-of-way have not been finalized, and obviously, AED has not yet constructed them. Section 2.27, "City will use reasonable efforts to acquire the old Granite Creek Bridge, and once acquired, the city shall refurbish bridge for public pedestrian, equestrian, and bicycle use." That bridge has been obtained, and the right-of-way dedicated to the city from Yavapai County in late 2021. A structural evaluation is ongoing regarding the refurbishment of that bridge. And Section 4.1, "AED was to convey 270 acres of land for open space at the end of the northeast side of the airport Commercial Services runway, to be conveyed simultaneously with purchase set forth in Section 4.2." So, I'll go straight there. Under Section 4.2, the city was to purchase 131 acres at the end of the runway, and that was to be completed by August of 2023. Now, under the contract, there's a process set forth to select an appraiser by a certain date. Both the city and AED had to appoint an appraiser, who then would, together, select another appraiser to do the appraisal. So, the city completed its appointment in time, AED did so as well, and the third, the party appraiser was appointed. Both AED and the city split the cost of that appraisal 50/50, and that has not been done yet. There's been many delays by the third-party appraiser, including deaths in his family and within his office. We had a conference call with them yesterday, and he expects to complete it within 30 days, he said at this point.
Yeah, that's a critical point, because this area is subject to FAA reimbursement, but it's important that the FAA appraiser complete his appraisal, because the FAA will not reimburse based upon appraisal that comes from something other than an FAA-approved appraiser. So, here's another situation where we're being kind of hamstrung by performance for a party that we have to rely on and the other party has to rely on to complete their work, because moving forward without that appraisal would be irresponsible, I think, on our part, because making sure that it's subject to a reimbursement, and a significant reimbursement from the FAA is something that we have to be patient for. And I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I'm losing patience with this guy. Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree. It's been frustrating to not hear back from that appraisal, and I think it sounds like AED is also sharing our frustration with that. I guess, Joe, my question to you is, if I'm understanding the process right, we had an appraisal that the city paid for, an appraisal that AED paid for, and then those appraisals were not in agreement, and so then we go to a third-party appraisal. Do we have an idea of where we stand in terms of, you know, where the discrepancy between those two values are?
I don't. I don't know what AED had for their number, but the process where we're appointing appraisers, each party appoints an appraiser, and they appoint a third party, that's spelled out in the contract. So, we had an appraisal done, and we could have agreed on that appraisal, and that's part of the contract. But if we don't agree, then we go through this process. So, that's what happened. We did have an appraisal, and we couldn't agree, both sides didn't agree on that appraisal, so we are going through the contractual steps.
Is there, and I imagine the contract probably doesn't consider this, given that the appraisal, the process we're going through right now has been uniquely delayed. But is there any capacity that we might be able to, if, I mean, my fear is that this is the guy who, whose dog ate his homework consistently, and he keeps coming back to us saying, "Oh, 30 more days." Is there, is there a mechanism to finally just kind of say, "Listen," is it contemplated? I guess it's not contemplated in the contract, but is there, if this guy doesn't deliver, or this appraiser doesn't deliver, what is our recourse at this point?
Yeah, and it's not contemplated in the contract, the kind of delays that we've experienced. We could agree mutually between the parties to then change the contract, right, which would be choose another appraisal. That's a discussion we've had, but at this point, with assurances from the appraisal, we haven't had an agreement to move to a new appraisal, a new appraiser. We have assurances as of yesterday that it would be completed, and so we're continuing with that contractual obligation.
So, we think that by the end of February, we'll actually have an appraisal in hand?
That was the assurance given.
Okay. I am not going to hold my breath, because that's a long time to wait, and we've already waited for a long time. Thank you, Joe.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we received 270 acres of open space at the end of the runway, and that's going to be for the extension of the runway, the east end of the runway, six-tenths of a mile. And then, we're also going to have to purchase 131 acres on top of that, correct?
Well, the 131, the donation of the 270 acres is conditioned upon the purchase of the 131, so they're tied together.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next item was Section 4.3 of the agreement. This was the purchase of what's known as the W parcel of 116 acres near the airport. Under the contract, the city was to pay just under $10 million, and in return, receive this 116-acre W parcel. The city has paid for that money, and AED has delivered the deed, so that part is completed. Section 4.4, this is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Rusing.
And the W parcel is where our new FedEx distribution center is located, right? Part of it?
That's accurate.
Okay, so, and then they purchased that property, which was, the proceeds were used to help pay off our city hall debt, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, the FedEx property was purchased at the same per-acre cost that we had paid, but they didn't purchase the entire parcel. Now, in Section 4.4, we already talked about this section briefly before. That was the conveyance of the 474 acres within the Dells. In addition to that, within 4.4, there was a promise that AED would provide an easement along Granite Creek for pedestrian use, and that the city would install fencing and signing along the trail easement. AED has provided that easement. The city has not begun construction at this point, but has, as we're going further, has started construction of some of the trails in that area. And so, Section 4.4, or, excuse me, 4.5, was a somewhat nebulous contract provision that allowed the city and AED to negotiate with each other to purchase up to three acres of land near the northeast end of Old Granite Creek Bridge for a public library. If that agreement wasn't reached between the parties within a year, that provision would lapse and has lapsed at this point. And then, Sections 6.1 through 6.5 are the promises, as I mentioned, there's other trail-related promises. This is, AED was to provide a 30-foot easement for the North Peavine Trail, and the city was to construct the North Peavine Trail and related, install related fencing and signage. So, in this case, the city has constructed and fenced the trail up to the Arizona State Land Department parcel, and is working with the state land on a special land use permit, and all the information has been supplied to the land department, and that's in review at this point. So, as I mentioned, Gwen Roach and Joe Baines are here for any clarification or if you have any questions. But those were, as I mentioned, the forward-looking deliverables as part of the contract at the time, many of which have been completed, many of which don't have deadline dates but are being actively worked upon.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I would just like to reiterate that fencing is a big deal in these development agreements and a lot of contracts and purchases, because we're considered open range, and cows are supposed to be able to roam wherever they want. And if you don't want them on your property, then it's up to you as the property owner to fence them out. You don't fence your cows in, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Well, thank you, Joe, for that thorough analysis, and I think it's important that the public at large have a, at least a relatively good understanding of what the terms and conditions of this contract are. I think if you look at each one of these provisions that we talked about today, you'll see that the city has acted in good faith. They've completed a number of their obligations. The obligations that haven't been completed primarily are based upon a lack of performance by a third party that wasn't a party to this contract and agreement. And that's, that's not really our responsibility to be able to force that issue. It should have been included in the original contract design and agreement, where you just, as Councilmember Ferworth mentioned, that you just don't write contracts that puts you in a liability for breach when you're relying on performance of a third party that isn't part of the contract. And I think we've seen that in several different examples today. So, we continue to move forward with our obligation, and I think that the next steps to be able to work out some type of a reasonable agreement with Arizona Eco Development so that we can continue to work and develop this master plan agreement should be expected from their side. Where this $150 million came from, you know, talk about pulling it out of the air. I don't think my arm could reach high enough to come up with $150 million out of the air, but the claim that because we haven't delivered sewer and water into this section in a, in a manner which the other party would find acceptable, makes their entire 640 acres worthless, is just beyond my ability to understand a reasonable partner to work on a contract moving forward. But we're going to do our best to get the next steps completed and be able to honor the agreement and reduce the financial liability to the city to a reasonable and acceptable level. Councilmember Rusing.
I have a question for the city attorney about the lawsuit. Is the same attorney that negotiated the development agreement, is he the one that's now suing us over it?
Well, he still represents AED.
Okay, thank you.
I suppose we could take public comment if there's any public that wants to comment on this.
I don't have any cards, Mayor.
Any other further comments or concerns from council? Well, I hope we've been able to bring something forward to the public that's important, that's been asked about, and we will continue to work with the developers to try to negotiate a settlement. And unfortunately, that's probably going to happen in executive session. But once we do come to an agreement, it'll be publicly noticed and made aware to the public at large. So, thank you very much, and this study session is adjourned. It's now 2:25. We'll reconvene at 3 o'clock for our voting session.